And we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on www.miniahawacounty.org site, reviewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, March 4th at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, March 19th at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. Action taking on the rezoning application during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, March 26th at or after 9:00 a.m. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room and the decision of the County Commission will be final. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-contributial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the January 28th, 2019 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have any item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. Ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff of the audience. If a member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Yes.
Could you please request the audience whether there are any members of the audience that wish to speak to an issue that is not on the agenda itself?
Sorry. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on an item not listed on the agenda? You have five minutes per person to address the Planning Commission. Item number one on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the January 28th, 2019 meeting. Item number two is the rezoning of 19-01 to rezone from I-1 Light Industrial District to the R-1 Residential District on the property legally described as lots 1 through 6, Block 5, Rowena Original, Section 26, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. The petitioner is Deb Larson. She is also the property owner. The location is 48272 South Dakota Highway, South Dakota State Highway 42. It's located approximately four miles east of Sioux Falls. Okay, so we'll move item number two to the regular agenda. Item number three, conditional use permit 19-09 to transfer one building eligibility from Track 3 Fisher's Edition Southwest Quarter to Track 2 Fisher's Edition Southwest Quarter, all in Section 19, Township 103 North, Range 52 West. Petitioner is H. Eugene Fisher. He's also the property owner. Location is 45434, 254th Street, located four miles northwest of Humboldt. Item number four, conditional use permit 19-12 to allow a private campground on the property legally described as Lot 1, Track B Graffs Edition Northwest Quarter, Section 30, Township 102 North, Range 47 West. Petitioner is Joe Barber. Property owner is the same. Location, 26026 484th Avenue, located 1.5 miles northwest of Brandon. Item number five is rezoning 19-03 to rezone from A-1 Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District on the property legally described as a north 277 feet, of the south 344 feet, of the east 234 feet, of the west half of the northeast quarter, and Track 1 of Ody's Second Edition of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, all in Section 32, Township 102 North, Range 48 West. This is RKB Investment LLC. They're also the owner. Location, 26026 44th Avenue, located 1.5 miles west of Brandon. Okay, we'll remove number five to the regular agenda as well. Item number, oh, item number six. So, item number two and item number five have been asked to be removed to the regular agendas. I need a motion to approve item number one, number three, and number four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to item number two. For those of you, your items have been approved. You're free to go.
Good evening, Commissioner. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Item number two is a rezoning 19-01. It's to rezone from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the R-1 Residential District. Property is located in the unincorporated area of Rowena. As you can see on the map here, the property is outlined in red. It's located at the intersection of Douglas Avenue and then South Dakota State Highway 42. Property is actually two parcels put together. The house is on, there's an existing residential house on the east lot. Let's skip forward. The exhibit that the applicant has provided, sorry, I said two lots. There's actually a total of six lots together. They're just rectangular. It's just split up in half there with the house being right here on that eastmost area. The property itself encompasses a total of 1.53 acres. The exist, the half, the other half of the lot is vacant. It's being used as a driveway from Douglas Avenue and the dri, or petitioner also has a driveway from South Dakota Highway 42 as well to the existing house there. The proposed change of zoning would help bring the property to match the residential zoning of adjacent land to the south and to the east. The remaining land to the north is zoned for industrial and commercial to the west. There's existing commercial there. The subject property is located within the rural service area. It's known as Rowena, as identified by the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan for Minneona County. Goal 5 states to support the orderly development of non-agricultural land uses. This, the result of this is to support development around rural service areas and intersections that are delineated on the future land use map that are compatible with other existing land uses. The, this property is also located within the Red Rock Corridor overlay district as well, which has its own future land use map, which, that map indicates this area for industrial use to the east of Douglas Avenue and the north of the highway and then the other side is, would be commercial, just for reference there. Staff visited the property on February 13th, 2019, determined that the, visited the property and determined that the proposed rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial District to the R-1 Residential District is appropriate for the immediate area. There is an existing house, which is shown in this image. And then, that's the one photo that I have there. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the R-1 Residential District is consistent with the goals and policies of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan and recommends approval of rezoning 19-01. And I'll answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions?
David, where is it relative to the, to the small store that's across the street? That is the smoke store or whatever the candy place?
The small store that you're referring to is located right here, which is Kitty Corner to the southwest.
Okay, and so that means then that there's like an antique store just right there?
Right here is the antique store.
Okay.
You referred to.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for David? Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Deb Larson, 48276 Highway 42, Brandon, South Dakota.
Any questions for petitioner?
Make sure to speak up. They can't hear you on the TV. I do have a question. Have you had any issues with the sort of festivals that go on there in town when, when the antique shop has?
We, we just purchased it December 30th.
Okay.
It was.
Because I know that parking is at a premium and they're parking on Highway 42 and all that kind of stuff. We have not experienced that yet.
Well, this lot has a lot of parking space on it for us.
Right.
Lot of land there, so, yeah, I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for her? Thank you. We may have, have you come back up after. Okay. Anyone else care to speak? State your name and address, please.
Good evening. Eric Willidson, Willidson Land Engineering, 902 South Cleveland in Sioux Falls. Here tonight on behalf of the property owner immediately to the west, F&amp;K Family, Assam Family LLC. They own several parcels along Highway 42. They have some obvious concerns about rezoning an industrial property that's next to their commercial property to residential use. That would cause them to be required to provide buffer yard of what I understand is be 30 feet. So it would take up 30 feet of that property. Again, too, I'm not sure the Red Rock Corridor study is wanting to add additional residential property on the front edge of the highway. Not sure the DOT would be either. My client's understanding was that this property was an industrial property. It was used as a, as like a plumbing business or something previous to this and that understand it has a, I don't know how, got a house hooked in with it, but this is a state highway corridor and like I said, my, my client asked me to come tonight. He couldn't be here. They have some grave concerns about rezoning an industrial property and there's industrial and commercial all along this corridor. And you're right, there's commercial across the street and that, and the antique shop across the street. All these properties are going to be affected by all of a sudden a residential zoning right next to them. So I think need to maybe rethink that a little bit and take a look at the Red Rock Corridor study because I really don't think the corridor study would advocate additional residential zoning on the highway, number one. And two, has anybody checked with DOT to see if DOT is in favor of additional residential development along the highway? So we would just ask that, that you recommend denial of this rezoning or defer it so we can get some questions answered before we jump into taking an industrial area and turning it into residential. I mean, every time I've been up here and tried to rezone properties to rural residential, I get this situation where all of a sudden we're impeding the agricultural building eligibility issue and it sounds like we're doing that here and now we've got room for potentially another house. So I guess I would, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, I don't think this is an appropriate use along the highway corridor.
Any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
You, ma'am, you can come back up. Please state your name and address. Speak a little louder, please.
Hey, Deb Larson, 48276 Highway 42, South Dakota, Brandon, South Dakota. When we purchased this house, we have driven past this house for 30 years. It's been residential. It was, I believe, it was built in the 1900, 1902 or something originally. And then the original owners, I'm not sure if they built new in the 90s, but it's what was one of the nicest homes in Rowena from what I understand. And then, I don't know, approximately maybe seven years ago, Kings Plumbing purchased it and they added on in 2000, some part of 2000. And, and I don't know much about it, just what I've heard. They added on that last part of the garage that is a very strange looking building and it, it goes straight up and comes down like a triangle. And they put their plumbing business in that building. No part of the house was used and no part of the other garage was used. And so it still is as it originally was, the house is. It always was intended to be a house. We would like to restore it back to the home it was. There was a divorce. The couple left. Two of the children stayed behind and partied in it for two years and totally destroyed it. So it, it still is all the structure and everything, but you know, it was, just became quite a, a bad situation, but it was a beautiful home, so. And we plan to use it for our forever home and plan to live there. We're not buying it to resell it. So I don't, do you have any other questions? There's, there's trees there to, to kind of protect it from the highway and I don't know why there would be any problem with being on the highway. It's been there forever, so.
Ms. Larson, does the driveway go out onto the highway then directly?
There are two driveways. One is a, a half circle driveway on the front of the property and the other one goes out on the side of the property.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and when Kings Plumbing had it, they had put their garbage and everything out front in the whole yard. It was a terrible mess, so we'd like to make it beautiful again like it was.
Any other questions for her? Thank you. You're welcome. Any other?
I guess I'll say, I don't think my client has a problem with there being a residential house there and there, and there's, there is one there and if they'd like to remodel it, I don't think has a problem with that. There are some serious consequences that come to the, some of the adjacent properties by rezoning this to residential in the way of buffer zones and whatnot. So if it can stay light industrial and still have a house on it, so be it. But we're going to affect some surrounding properties if we rezone this to, to residential.
Thank you. Mike?
Scott, can you answer the question? Can a residence reside there or remain there even though it's zoned?
Well, it can. And this is, if you recall, this is similar to the situation up at the Crypts exit and we went through that with the storage units for T-Hart. And it can stay there as a legal non-conforming use, but should it ever be damaged, it could not be replaced. And there, potentially, there.
Kevin just indicated or had a good idea that, you know, in order to maybe alleviate the concerns about that buffer is, if you look at the way that this, so I suppose what we could do, if you'd like to maybe give us some time to evaluate this, you can see that there are six individual lots and I, what could be done was, we did advertise all six of them. We actually could reduce that and perhaps leave these two out, leave these, leave these zoned industrial and, and just rezone these four lot, these four parcels to residential. And then the applicant could just indicate the, you know, these are buffer strips then. I mean, there's, there's another option there, too.
Scott, just one quick question. Directly to the south of the property, across the road, those are all residential?
I believe they are. And I would have to see what they're zoned, but there are several areas that, you know, are commercially zoned properties that have residences on them. I mean, we've seen that. There are a few places like that in the county.
Any other further discussion? Yeah, I guess I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
I, I have an additional question. If this entire amount is rezoned, then potentially there could be six housing lots there, is that correct? Am I understanding it correctly?
Um, well, no, because the existing house takes up three of them and I, I'm not sure how wide those lots are, but it would be pretty difficult to build a house that really, is that deep wide? They're, they're not really buildable and I think that they're all considered one lot at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, going back to the Red Rock Corridor study and stuff, how does this fit in with the plan that we came up with those few years ago? And what about the DOT? And, you know, it is slower, a slower speed limit as you go through this rural area, residential area or what do we call it, service area?
Well, I think the DOT is gonna, I don't think the DOT is gonna have much to say about because you're, you're, it's a lesser use. You're downzoning it from an industrial use to a residential use.
It requires an access.
And there is already, no, it would not, it would not require new access permit.
You're out of order.
I, I don't, I don't think that, in my experience with DOT, they're not gonna have an issue with this, but if you want to delay it for, continue it for a month, we can get that right in front of you, from DOT for you. They almost, they can't deny them access. That's state law, so.
They have right now, though, access from two directions, from the west and from the south.
Yep. And I think historically, they would say they've always had an access off the highway, but I don't think that they would deny them an access.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we defer action on this for one month so that that would give the planning of the, our staff a little bit of time to kind of explore some avenues. It's a pretty vague motion.
No, I guess I would second that, you know, I really am encouraged to see the potential restoration of this home, but I do think that that one month period might give both parties an opportunity to come to a agreement of some sort and, you know, if they can't then make the decision from there. But I guess if we, obviously neighbors can work it out, it's a great thing if, you know, come back for us and we'll make the final decision. So I guess, long story short, I do second your motion to defer for one month.
Madam Chair, I, I on the other hand, think that changing it from light industrial to residential is, is, is perhaps a mistake. And if we can live there, leaving it zoned light industrial, I think that's, that's a better solution, but I'm willing to go along with discussing this again in a month.
And maybe that's what the decision will be in a month.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion to second to defer item number two, the rezoning of 19-01. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. Please begin.
David Heinold, County Planning Department. Item number five, rezoning 19-03 is to rezone from the A-1 Agricultural District to the A-1, our I-1 Light Industrial District. The property is actually located at 1600 West Holly Boulevard, the, which is approximately one and a half miles west of Brandon. This area is actually Brandon as well. It's the incorporated area that is in between both Brandon and Sioux Falls. This is the subject property right here outlined in red. It's actually encompassing two properties, which totals to be about 2.85 acres. The, currently, the pro, this property also has an existing house on it, on the property. Is located on this parcel right here as a square. And then the additional property just kind of wraps around that property to the north and west. This property is located within the transition area as identified by the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan for Minneona County. Goal number four states to promote the orderly development of unincorporated land that will be likely annexed into a municipality in both the short and long term. The, the result of this goal is to focus new growth and development within municipalities and areas adjacent to existing municipalities or municipalities where infrastructure will be available. The, the subject property is located immediately west of, or west of Brandon. The, the comprehensive plan for the city of Brandon shows a mix of light and, or industrial and commercial north of Holly Boulevard in this area. The existing areas, most of the existing areas south are residential with a few commercial properties that are located inside city limits. Staff, or the applicant has provided a, a plan of a proposed image of, for what this could be as you're just, you're considering the rezoning from A-1 Agricultural to light industrial. This is just what the applicant has provided in your packets. This is a picture of when I was out on the property. Holly Boulevard is in the foreground. This is existing house. Does have trees that wrap all the way around the property. And this is looking west on Holly Boulevard, city limits of Brandon to the left of this image and the subject property to the right with the trees along the Holly Boulevard there. This is looking east back towards Brandon off in the distance there. This is that commercial area, subject property there. This is one of the adjacent properties to the south that's inside city limits. Looks like an existing house there on the property. And this is looking to the southeast of the property at that commercial area, strip mall. And this is looking from that strip mall area, parking lot. And again, just showing the residential to the southeast of this property. And, I don't have one more. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from the A-1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District is consistent with the goals and policies of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan and recommends approval of rezoning 19-03. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Is the existing house going away then?
I would imagine so.
Any other questions for David? Is the petitioner here? Please state, come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thanks. Thank you.
What I handed out to you there is the planning zoning of the city of Brandon. The little piece that looks like a, a piece is missing, like a bite out of the corner, that's the subject lot. As you look on your screen, you can, that, it'll match up with that. So the adjoining property surrounded on the three sides there is light industrial currently. So the adjoining property surrounded on the three sides there is light industrial currently.
Any questions for him?
Thank you.
I ask you to come back up. Anyone else in the audience want to address this? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Paul Odie, fourteen oh one West Creekside Drive. When this had gone to the city of Brandon, I, I don't know, sometime last year, in the same meetings, there's a definite concern between, um, heritage and sandstone, I believe. And right now, that center right there is, uh, is considered a safety concern for the city of Brandon for traffic. Adding another access point for multiple use, whether it's a service center, storage, et cetera. You have multiple uses coming in from that north side as, as an access point where now it's a single source residential. So, you know, a few cars, where if you're adding a service center, you're adding multiple, the, much more traffic, et cetera. Because between those two spots, it is, there is a traffic study that the city of Brandon have done that it's been a known traffic concern. And I, I don't recall how they do their metrics, but, um, somebody had spoke on it who, who had done the study. And, um, adding a point where you're, again, in a lot of instances, you try to limit your access to your main street. Sioux Falls does the same thing with boulevards, et cetera. Well, this, if you're adding a multiple use property, you're adding, uh, again, to the already issue that's going on in the area.
Any questions for him?
So, why didn't the city annex this into, into Brandon?
I don't know. But again, they, they've done a traffic study and the, the area is already an issue with the city of Brandon. Because you're through two major, whether it's the apartments and residential in the, what would be the right-hand side of the picture, and then the stoplights actually at the, uh, heritage. So you actually have backup pass through that property in the morning, in the mornings and evenings, traffic in and out of Brandon.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike?
A question, point of clarification, maybe, uh, for Scott. Again, we're just looking at this from a zoning standpoint. Any, we're not necessarily approving a, an exact, use this exact layout. So, so any, any access points, any type of right-hand turn line off would have to be terminated by building permit that would go back to addressing your concern, um, of that safety point, getting people in and out, um, without causing additional disruption or safety concerns. But, again, we're just looking at tonight, it's use. Does that make sense?
So, I mean, it, it, and I don't know how it is in conjunction with the city of Brandon, but that, um, you know, like I said, there, at the time, I don't know how it goes from city plant, Brandon city planning to this phase, but, um, it's just, it, it is, it is a concern. And allowing that higher level of, uh, the zoning for this permitted use, you are adding that, that level of traffic, so.
Scott, do you have a comment?
I, I think, uh, if you look at the map, the south half of this, this might be one of those split jurisdiction roads. I think that the south half of the, of Holly Boulevard is maintained or is under the jurisdiction of Brandon. And I think the north half is under the jurisdiction of the county highway. So if they, they will have to work with the county highway when they go in to do, get an approach permit or a change of use, like you, like you've indicated. See, I was gonna say something else. Oh, of course, the city of Brandon could always annex this in, or they could voluntarily annex into Brandon one of the other, but, um, uh, and I, David, you did run this by the city of Brandon, right?
I did email Brian Green, the city of Brandon.
And he said?
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Any other people in the audience want to speak on this item? You want to come forward, Ian Lee?
Comment on the, when it was in July of last year, this was presented to the city of Brandon. The reason that we're here is because the lack of sewer connection. So this would have to be on a septic tank. So, that's the reason. And Paul, so now, if you know him, he was our city engineer. He's also doing a, uh, transportation study right now. He has left the city of Brandon and he's informed us of, um, that as well.
Any questions for him?
Do you, uh, plan to plummet so that if you, uh, do get hooked up to sanitary sewer, that you'd be able to switch over?
It would, and what Brian is talking about, that they think it'll wrap around the north side of the property. So the new railroad, if you were to zoom out on that picture, there's railroad cars that are in the back to the north of that property. They think the sewer will come from that. Yes, and if, you know, basically, they just basically said, go get your stuff built in the county and then come back and we annex, you know what I'm saying, when that time comes, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this item? Guess I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
Looks like a pretty tidy project to me, and I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
I'd second.
Okay, motion to second to approve rezoning of nineteen oh three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. We'll move on to the regular agenda. We have one item there. Res zoning of eighteen dash oh eight. District to commercial district.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Uh, this item is rezoning number eighteen oh eight. Uh, as stated, is to rezone property described as lots ten through twenty-six, except road of blocks five, Lions Village Edition, in section seventeen, township one oh three north, range fifty west. Um, and it's to rezone the property from R one residential district to C commercial district. Uh, and the property is shown on map. Uh, this item has been brought to you before on the October twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Uh, at that meeting, the item was deferred due to concerns regarding the condition of the property, uh, as there's unlicensed vehicles and junk on the property. And the deferral was to allow some time for, for cleanup, uh, and to allow for inspection of the cleanup. And the staff has, uh, been to the property, and I'll show you a few photos, uh, and there has been little cleanup that has occurred. The petitioner, uh, shouldn't, staff would like to note that many of the items that are on the property, uh, the petitioner should be aware that this is considered a abandoned property, uh, in accordance with the public nuisance ordinance. And this, the property will be in violation of the public nuisance ordinance even after this, uh, petition is rezoned. Uh, we're kind of moving through this, uh, to work through the process, uh, prior to, while we work with them on the res, on the public nuisance. Uh, so even after this is approved, you'll still have to remove much of the items that are considered to be abandoned property. Uh, and the definition was provided in the staff report. Staff would also note that, uh, our recommendation will not change for this item, that we will keep our recommendation for approval, and that is based on, uh, the location adjacent to, uh, existing commercial zone property. And it's also based on its location in our rural, uh, a rural service area in the comprehensive plan. Um, so, I'll move to the photos from there. Uh, so this is a photo of the property, uh, from the last, uh, October, uh, when we looked at it for the first time. Uh, and this is a photograph from this February, a couple, a couple of weeks ago. And you'll see that nothing really has moved. And then again, from last October to now, there is, uh, maybe a car that was moved, and that was about it. Um, some of the, the, oh, and previously, at the, at the meeting, uh, we, I did note that the road leading up to this is pretty narrow. Uh, and rezoning it may cause more traffic to go on and up the road. Uh, but due to the petitioner's request that this is to become a, um, like a car lot and storage area, uh, he would be required to get a conditional use permit after the rezoning as well. Uh, and we can have him work with the township to make, uh, certain, uh, road improvements to widen the road, uh, if we'd, even that's going to be necessary upon that time. We can't, but that's not part of the rezoning portion. I, and this is some of the examples of what's considered as abandoned property. Uh, I, I would acknowledge that if the petitioner is planning on selling cars there in the future, that having some, uh, cars in the property, uh, may be in his interest not to move them twice. Uh, but some of the stuff, as you see in these images, uh, is clearly dilapidated and, and abandoned on the property. And, and we have notified the petitioner of that. And, uh, when I go in there in the snow, it may be covered up, but it appeared to all still be there. Uh, so that is the report, and again, uh, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Uh, and I would note that you, as the planning commission, have the ability to, uh, and decide whether or not, uh, it is in the county's best interest to approve this at this time, uh, or to, uh, deny it and, and make them, and move forward with the property from that point on. Is there any questions?
Kevin, uh, just one thing.
Go ahead.
Let me go back to that road there. I guess that's in our township. Those trees there, I'm pretty sure are in the right of way there. That's why it probably looks like it's such a narrow road, too, so.
Yeah, and from driving on it, I don't think you could get two cars side by side on it.
No, you can't, but it's, you still got the trees there to deal with, too, so.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin? Thanks. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Uh, hello, Brad Hatley, uh, fourteen oh nine North Jessica, Sioux Falls. So, we are here to talk about whether or not this property be, can, can be used as commercial property. Uh, we kind of got off track a little bit the last time around. You know, I, I do understand that the property has fallen in kind of sad state. Uh, unfortunately, unfortunately, I've, I've taken this responsibility on, but it was as of last fall. And so, having to be at my car lot and wanting to move my car lot to Lyons, I, I can't be in two places at one time. I really want to get the place cleaned up, I want to get it functional, I want to get, uh, I want to fix the place up. But unfortunately, my time is spent elsewhere. And, uh, um, this time of year, it's real difficult to get out there and get stuff done. You know, come spring, I can hit it head on, you know, and, and, uh, and get stuff taken care of. But right now, it's just, it's rough. So, uh, but that, I don't know that that should really matter, you know, if, whether or not the, the property can be considered, uh, commercial. You know, it, the property, everything around it's commercial or agricultural. And, uh, um, I guess I, I, I would hate for you to stifle me before I even get a chance, so.
Any questions for petitioner?
Madam Chair, you know, the, the thing is that your property already is basically a nuisance. You know, the county commission could clean this up and put it on your, on your taxes, and we don't want to do that. At the same time, uh, we don't want to have, uh, a bunch of rusted material dragged in there and further abandoned on top of the pile of stuff that's already there.
And I, I agree. Um, the vehicles that are there, uh, the majority of the vehicles that are there are property of the car lot. And it was, it was, uh, it's been used as a overflow lot for, for quite a few years. The, uh, uh, we've, we've been able to hang our dealer's license there. Um, it just hasn't been a retail lot. So, some of that stuff, if everything goes well, regardless. Um, but I, my hope is, is that I can, I can move out of there, work out of there, and then clean it up while I'm working out of there. You know, rather than paying a lease on another property to have the car lot, you know, I would like to be able to, uh, focus all my energies and on this property to make this something. Now, with all that said, when we purchased the property, it was a nuisance to the state, uh, to the county. Part of the condition of us purchasing it is we had to clean the property up. Uh, we had to make sure that, uh, we had to put windows back in the school, uh, in the building. Uh, we had to make the building, we had to clean it up. And so we did that. Unfortunately, there was a gentleman that we allowed to go out there and, and park some stuff in trade for some renovations on the building. The majority of the stuff that's just randomly laying around is stuff that he put there. Unfortunately, I didn't have a lot of say in that. And I've tried to get ahold of the guy, and he just refuses to move his stuff or clean up anything. And so I've been, I've been fighting with that, which isn't a huge problem because, uh, I believe I can get a tow company out to haul his cars off, and, uh, he's got a camper out there, and then the rest of the stuff, I guess, just goes in the back of a dump truck and gets hauled to the dump. Um, because obviously, he doesn't care about it. But it's just, uh, it's kind of a bummer that it's now my responsibility, but it is a responsibility that I did take on, so. Um, whatever, whatever I need to do, I will do. I just hope that you guys can understand that it is winter time and it is freezing cold out there, and so it's just not going to get done today, so.
Okay, any other questions?
What was the name of the gentleman that has all that stuff?
Uh, Caleb Huddle.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone here in the audience care to address this? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Bruce Mark, two hundred first Avenue, Lyons. Uh, and I'm also on Lyons Township Board. And that photo there, if you look from the west, those trees are in the middle of the road. So, in the thirty-three foot, right of way, if he would clean that out, we could make a road there. And, like, those vehicles and stuff have been there for years. How do you get by with getting all that stuff there? We've addressed this with the county several times. We don't get anywhere. So how did it get this far?
Any other comments?
No.
Any questions for him?
What would you like us to do at the county level?
Make him clean it up. He's, he had, he had six weeks of nice weather after the last meeting, did nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Harold Boer, four six six oh eight, two five two Street Lyons. And, uh, we, in Lyons, I own business in Lyons. Uh, we really try to keep Lyons neat and clean and a place where people like to come and live in. Uh, good evidence of that was this past summer, the city park. Through volunteer labor and donated money, all the ash trees were taken down and disposed of. The park was regraded, reseeded, and twelve-foot maple trees all put back in with donated time and money, and a shelter house is going to be put in this next year, again, with donated labor and money. This is the pride that the Lyons community people have in their community, and we want to try to keep it neat and clean. And like Bruce says, he had four to six good weeks, uh, in November and December was nice weather. No attempt was made to clean it. Uh, we just don't want Lyons to become a dumping ground for people that can't do it in Sioux Falls.
Harold, uh, how did this property fall into this condition? I mean, uh...
I believe the building originally, well, when it was a school, it was condemned. As a school building, it was not safe to be in anymore. And that's eventually when Tri Valley built the new school, uh, west of Lyons, I think that would have been, uh, what, mid, late seventies? And, uh, they moved out of it, it's because it was condemned at that time. And it's just been vacant ever since, uh, what, late seventies, early eighties, been vacant ever since. And just kids and Bandles and others have been there, and...
So the machinery, the trucks, the parts, the stuff, that's, has that accumulated just in the last two years or so?
I think the cars and stuff that are there in just the last few years, uh, prior to this, it was just a vacant lot, really, back there, yeah.
Any other questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Wayne Boer, four oh one First Avenue Lyons. Um, he mentioned that it was all commercial or agriculture around that property. I have the residence that's just west of his property with another rental property that I own next to that, and then there's another residence. So I just wanted to point out there are other residents next to this property. And I also would like to make sure that I have a clean neighbor, nice, organized neighbor. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donley Fredrickson, three twenty-fifth Street, Lyons, South Dakota. Uh, I guess I was one of those guys that helped work in the park and donated money to make things better and cleaner in that town, and I keep my place very, very clean. One of the guys in the last twenty years that built a new house there and really don't want to lose the value by letting somebody else come in and, and make a mess. And then we have a couple other places where people move from, bought land out there from Sioux Falls, and it's their dumping ground, and we don't need another one. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Come forward again if you'd like, sir.
I would like to say too, that, uh, if in fact this place, uh, this property cannot be converted to commercial, um, it serves very little purpose to me whatsoever. Uh, the gentleman who, uh, has kind of scattered his stuff all over the parking lot, has offered to purchase the property. Uh, there is another gentleman who is interested in purchasing the property. He has a car salvage wrecking business. Um, and they're, they're willing to, to buy the property. And so if I can't use it, if, 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 uh, if Lyons wants to, to fight me and not allow me to, give me a chance to get in there and get it cleaned up come the spring, uh, when the weather is nicer, uh, I, I'll still have to clean it up. But at that point, I'm not going to continue to pay taxes on something that I can't use, and so I will sell it. And so I will say too, that the people that may purchase it or who have confronted me and want to purchase it, these are not people that they want in their town. Uh, because they will, it's, it's, it's obvious that, uh, the one gentleman is very, very messy. And, uh, you know, like I say, he, he just refuses to clean anything up. And, and it's possible that he thinks that, uh, by him doing what he's doing, I'll be forced to clean it up and sell it. And then he can buy it. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I'm going to close the floor. Comments, commissioners?
I'd like to say, I think you have enough time to get stuff cleaned up in there. You see back, go back to the, see all the tracks up there in the snow? You just think of all the, all the animals up there that are living in their licoons or whatever. So I just think it's a nuisance up there. I'd like to see something get done. I think you have plenty of time last fall to get it done. I don't know, that's all I got to say, I guess.
Do you have a motion?
Is there a motion?
I guess I have a motion to deny it, I guess. I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second to deny, uh, rezoning of eighteen oh eight. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Move on. We don't have any old business, new business? Sign ordinance review?
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd like to make a comment on older business. I just, uh, I feel like our last meeting, uh, a month ago was a, a rough meeting, pretty long meeting. Lots of people here, uh, and we had four meetings without getting off our butt. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, it's, it's too much of a burden for us to have month in and month out meetings of that, of that type, especially for the minimal compensation that we receive. And, uh, it's been my, uh, wish that, uh, we would have security present for these events as well. And I see we again did not. And I can tell you also, and Scott will tell you also, that, uh, the city of Hartford wants to join in the fun and, and to have a joint jurisdiction where they can fail to show up. And, uh, it's, uh, it's really, um, I really appreciate all of you, um, to take on this task, but I think, uh, we as a county need to, uh, treat, uh, you all better and to, uh, try to take the, uh, try to, uh, make this a, a less burdened, um, event. I don't know. Any comments?
I'll just chime in and say that I, um, last Tuesday, I did attend the Hartford City Council meeting where they discussed their joint jurisdiction. I, uh, went over some of the procedures and what, sort of how our meetings go. And, um, they were quite surprised when they, I think when they realized that the city council, four of them, would need to be coming to a Tuesday morning meeting because they are all fairly young people and I, I assumed were. So they, they, that was eye-opening, and, uh, Donna Kelly has suggested that, uh, each municipality should have their own legal council here, and I brought that up as well to the Hartford people, that, um, our state attorney has strongly encouraged each municipality should be sending their own legal representative. And, uh, they didn't like that suggestion either, so they did continue it until March fifth. They, they were wrongly under the assumption that they could do code enforcement, that the city would have some kind of code enforcement authority within their jurisdiction. And I indicated to them that would not be the case. They're still, to, to be honest with you, they're still very upset about that Broward addition junkyard. And that's what this is, a lot of this is, is bubbling up over that. And I explained to them that, you know, unfortunately, code enforcement, when push comes to shove, it takes a long time. And, and Donna can, uh, attest to this as well. It's not necessarily that we don't have people working on it. We do. It's just that the, the courts are busy, and by the time you schedule and go through the process, everyone has due process, it just stretches out. And the longer that you have uncooperative people where you can't find them to serve them or whatever, which was sort of the case with this Broward addition thing, it just drags on, and, and they wanted immediate resolution. So anyway, we're working on, there's still discussions. And my concern is, you know, just like we had tonight, we're, we're going to have planning commissions stacked up here all waiting. And, uh, you know, it's, it eventually, we're, we're going to have to do something because Brandon doesn't have a joint jurisdiction, and that amazes me. I mean, that, the, the, the one...
The one tonight, yeah.
The one municipality that should have a joint jurisdiction doesn't. And Crooks wants to have it. I, I bumped into Mayor Jamie Rounds at the home show on Sunday, and, well, that came up again. And so I, I think that there's a lot of these things that, you know, potentially we could be looking at. I don't necessarily want to make you sit through five planning commission meetings or six planning commission meetings, but... So let me stay longer.
Let me, let me also say, I don't believe that the regular county commission understands all the stuff that we're going through on this where it's event after event. I mean, they get one or two appeals every other month. And, uh, basically, every one that we get is an appeal, uh, all the way. And, uh, so I'm, uh, I suggested that Bonnie might stop by tomorrow and, and talk during public input. Her favorite part, public input.
I will be addressing the commission on the behalf of the planning commission. Um, I do believe that after last month's meeting, which was ten thirty or whatever it was, and don't get me wrong, I understand public service, I've been doing it a long time. But I also understand that it just seemed like we had one thing right after the other. And I also understand we don't have a December meeting. But I do know that it's a commitment to us to do what we need to do and make the right decisions as well. And I believe that the commission we have right now is a good commission. Um, it's up to us to have the knowledge and experience and hear all, hear all the pros and cons, no matter what they are and how long it may be. But I also think that there needs to be maybe a little bit of restitution here as well. Um, and I just think the county commission needs to hear that as well. And Jeff called me today and asked me if I would address them under public input tomorrow, which I will do.
Do you think there's more at the beginning of the year? People want to get building, that's why there's more at the beginning of the year like this, and or not?
I think that with CAFOs, uh, last year, didn't we have like five and two meetings?
You think they want to get them on early so they can get, get planted, yeah? And that's kind of a big thing.
Anything with the word barn in it is, we can't have it.
So, I'll see you tomorrow morning, I guess, then.
I guess I'll be here.
Uh, and then I'll just transition this into a presentation that, uh, Kevin and David have been working on. And we're looking at revising our sign ordinance. We have provided this to the state's attorney for review, so tonight's just a general discussion, sort of an introduction. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Yes. Uh, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Um, as, uh, Scott just announced there, this is kind of our introduction to the sign ordinance. As, uh, uh, we put this on kind of one of our, uh, staff projects that we want to accomplish for the upcoming year. So when you look at the sign ordinance, uh, the first thing that I see as, at this is what is a sign? And our ordinance sign definition is really big. Uh, and this is actually the identical, uh, definition as the city of Sioux Falls. And I suppose that's probably why this is our ordinance. Uh, but if you look at this, it really names off just about anything possible as a sign. When it's any object, device, structure, or part thereof, outdoors, visible, and calls attention to a business, is essentially what it is. So then, uh, when I said would it really makes anything a sign, uh, these are all different signs that were brought up or that I took pictures of in the county. For example, like branding signs. Uh, every single grain bin in the county has one of these things. Not a one of them are permitted. Technically, not a one of them is allowed at our ordinance. So by reviewing the ordinance, it's not just creating more laws to abide by. It is actually making these, these things that are kind of custom, some of these things that are customary, uh, to work within our ordinance. Because, uh, and then other things, um, if you read our, what would this be? Would a statue be a, a sign, um, or other art? Uh, many farms have their names out in the front of the farm. Is that advertising the farm? Uh, how does that, uh, work into the ordinance, uh, and things like that? Uh, so, and what does a sign do? Well, in order for a sign to work, uh, the sign has to direct, uh, it, uh, the driver or the person going through has to detect the sign, be able to read the sign, and then react to the sign. So, uh, some of these things here on, on the, the right side of the screen that, uh, are all things that change how people interact with signs on the road. Uh, and in order to be it functional, we want functional signs in the county. Uh, we can adjust these things in our ordinance, the size, height, setback, and lighting. Uh, so that way, if one of our goals as a county is to have, be able to direct people as the, the ordinance says, uh, you know, if we have a two-by-two sign on front of a house, uh, it doesn't exactly bode well for being able to detect, detect the sign and then read it and then react to it in time to, to have a safe, uh, arrival to the destination. So, uh, that's another reason why we're kind of reviewing this. Um, oh yeah, there's one example, the two-by-square-foot sign for home occupation or off-premise signs for limited to nine square feet. Uh, it gets to be pretty small when you're driving sixty-five miles down, down a highway. Then other things that our sign ordinance doesn't really address is sign area calculations. How do we calculate these, uh, types of signs? Uh, you know, you can calculate it by the rectangle that it covers. Well, then the person who has the, the wavy sign that may draw more attention gets a deduction of the sign area. So, uh, you know, balancing what we can do, um, how we can create those sign areas would help, uh, with the sign clarity. Uh, and then also part of the reason why we'd like to review the sign is, uh, because of, of the law. Uh, so when we're dealing with signs, we're dealing with the First Amendment, uh, that free speech. Um, a few years ago, uh, Reed versus Town of Gilbert was a Supreme Court decision uh, that said that, uh, we can't have content-based rules in our signage regulations. Uh, and there are a few spots in our ordinance that might, uh, run into trouble with this, uh, particular, uh, court ruling. Uh, and we want to make sure we try to address some of those, and that's why we have, uh, a good legal counsel to help us out. And why this is only introductory, because this could, um, uh, take on a lot to review any proposals and what we have now. I think that's where I ended it. Oh yes, and then this is kind of our list of the sign areas of our ordinance that do, uh, have signage, uh, in the, the ordinance. So we have on-premise signs, we have off-premise signs, we have signs for specific uses in the additional use regulations. We have different regulations in the Red Rock corridor, such as that rezoning we had today. There's different sign regulations for that. And then within our definitions, we'd like to look at those. Uh, so in the, each one of you ha- received tonight a, kind of a review of the sign ordinance. Hopefully, it's clear enough, uh, at kind of some ideas that have been put on paper. Uh, since this is just an introductory thing, uh, it's more to draw comments. So as you read through these, and you read through the, uh, comments that are put onto the paper, uh, you can get a feeling of how the sign ordinance works. Um, uh, I, we feel like the introductory tonight is especially good because although you deal with the zoning ordinance more than most, uh, sign ordinance issues are more administrative. So you aren't oftentimes dealing with the sign ordinance on a daily basis or on a monthly basis when you have these meetings. And so, um, with that, I guess, uh, I'll ask for any questions.
Well, I can report, we have had some sign issues in the past. There was that I ninety racetrack that had, uh, added some extra square footage to their pillar of signs. And, uh, um, just as I look at this stuff, uh, you know, what about a pipeline warning sign that says, "Don't dig here," you know, um, or whatever?
We've been working on this for a while. We didn't want to bring it to the last meeting because I, I mean, it was a thousand year long meeting. And so, it's something that we're going to, you'll be working on over the next several months. So I would just encourage you to read this, uh, contact any of us with any suggestions or thoughts or concerns that you have. And, um, we'll start working on it in the next two, three, four, five months, so it'll be something. We do need to, it is important that we change our sign ordinance because right now it's not in compliance with what I would say is legally been laid out by the Supreme Court.
We had that other guy that painted the word wine on his roof. It was giant, as big as this room, wine, W-I-N-E. But, and he wanted to have a winery, but he had not planted a vine yet.
He never did, he never did do a winery. He only had his conditional instrument, so there...
Kevin, do you know, did we deal with this when we did the court... Kevin, do you know, did we deal with this when we did the corridor study?
We looked at, we looked at some signage for the corridor study.
Okay.
It has to be ground...
Yeah, a ground sign.
Ground sign.
Monument.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, this is, I mean, it's just all really good food for thought. So, I mean, we have seed signs all over.
Yeah.
Hold and Harvest Pioneer, I mean, I never even think about them as a potential violation. And Home for Sale, Chuck Sutton always has his auction signs out about land that's going to be auctioned. I mean, I never even think about that as a potential violation, and...
And if someone called and complained to me about a, a seed sign, I probably would not do anything about it. And I know you shouldn't, you can't be arbitrary either on how you enforce these things, so let's just address it and, and make sure that...
Right, okay.
Not having someone say, "Well, you're, you're showing favoritism," or whatever.
So, as far as content, I mean, some of the stuff could be pretty offensive, right?
Well, so the Reed versus Town of Gilbert is content because in that case, it was a, a temporary church function that had one size of sign and limitations, where like a temporary business had a different size and limitations. Well, you can't distinguish between the both, either one of them, the content. So, you can't say that a church sign is this size and a, a commercial sign is this size and the seed sign is this size. You have to build your ordinance so that it works for all signs, not specific uses, specific spots.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Did they appeal that?